Call of seven o'clock, County Commission Meeting to order on May 11. I'll call on Mr. Johnson to give the invocation.
Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, again, we're thankful for the opportunity to serve you and to serve the people of this county, but once again, we find ourselves in need of your aid. But Father, we know that we're sinful by nature, and Father, that our mind is given to foolishness, but I pray tonight you'll impart your wisdom and your strength and your character to us, that we'll make decisions that will serve the people of this county best and honor you, and we ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Just standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, in the God of God, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
I call on Mr. Mashburn for adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, there are a couple of adjustments to the agenda this evening. First of all, we do have a presentation tonight under a presentation of special recognitions and awards. This will be Mr. Bill Doolittle's last meeting with the county commissioners, and so it is traditional that county commissioners appoint a person who is retired, I mean, award a person who is retiring a plaque of service, and so we want to add that under presentation of special recognition and awards. Under public hearings, one item that should have shown under public hearings actually showed up under administrative matters, and that's the first item, Item A, which is request for approval of the establishment of an exit 42 roadway protection overlay. That was properly advertised, so we don't have a problem, legal problem, as far as moving it, was just put under administrative matters when it should have been put under public hearings, but it was properly advertised as a public hearing for tonight at seven o'clock. So we just need to move Item A up under public hearings. The other thing I have is to add to the closed session, there are two items tonight. The first one is 143-318.11A2, and the second one is 143-318.11A4. Mr. Chairman, those are the adjustments to the agenda that I have.
Do we have any additional adjustments or additions to the agenda? If not, do we have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. We're going now moving the presentation of special recognition. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, it's my privilege to make a special presentation this evening, and at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Bill Doolittle if he'll come forward.
Mr. Johnson, please use the microphone. We won't be able to pick it up.
Ladies and gentlemen, this evening, we're going to recognize Mr. Bill Doolittle for his service to the citizens of this county and all of us here, and you develop a certain relationship with some folks, a special relationship, when you serve with people a number of years, and I've gained a lot of respect personally from Mr. Doolittle, and I know the other members of the board and his staff has as well, but I have a little bit of biographical information to share with you this evening, that he's spent 39 years in tax appraisal work, and he's done appraisal in four different counties. He served us here in Iredell County for seven years as the Tax Assessor and Director of Tax Administration and Land Records, and he led the county through two reevaluations and well into a third, and he's considered honestly, one of the most knowledgeable tax assessors in the state of North Carolina, and he says he's retiring to spend more time with his children and his grandchildren. And while I respect that, he's going to be sorely missed by the members of this board, and I'm sure everyone in the county that works with him. But if I may speak personally for just a minute, a lot of folks don't understand the mechanics of how a county budget is financed, and the county commissioners certainly set the tax rate, but we match that tax rate according to the tax base, and that information has to be reliable for us to make good decisions. And you've been well-served by this gentleman to my right, because every time, we get reliable information that helps us to make good decisions, and we owe a great deal of gratitude to this gentleman for his diligence and his hard work, and he did make one mistake when he came here. He came to a new county at a time when the laws were changing, as far as certain statutes related to tax use, farm use, and there was a lot of misunderstanding, but what I came to understand during that process, it was because of his character and his integrity and his calm demeanor, that he got us all through it, and he's earned the respect of me and many other people, and we're especially thankful for you this evening, Mr. Doolittle, and we congratulate you. And I'm going to present you with this plaque. It's the William E. Doolittle, in appreciation for years of dedicated service to Iredell County.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. We thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I really wanted to thank the Board of Commissioners for their support. Mr. Mashburn, Finance Officer Susan Blumstein, Tracy Jackson, and especially my staff, they do the work, and I catch a lot of the grief, but I also catch a lot of the praise, and I think that they deserve it more than I do, but I really appreciate it, and I think a lot of the citizens of Iredell County have tried to serve them well. Thank you very much.
Mr. Robson, you first.
County Commissioners, I want to thank you all for taking the time and consideration this evening to have me up here speaking, as well as the staff and everybody that assists this process. I'm here tonight on behalf of Carolina Beer and Beverage. They're a manufacturer of high-quality beverage products that's made in Mooresville, that's made in Mooresville its home and headquarters since 1997. They're a producer of various beer products, and in recent years, have began to specialize in contract manufacturing for the energy drink industry. Currently, they employ 182 full-time workers with an average salary higher than the county wage average. Currently, Carolina Beer and Beverage has proposed and are planning a new production line with hot fill capabilities within its Mooresville facility. The new line will enable them to meet increased production demand and will provide capabilities for further diversification. This expansion will entail $4.4 to $5 million in new investment and create a minimum of 19 jobs, with the job creation potential of 36 to 40 new jobs in total. Their investment will bring about an anticipated five-year tax impact of $80,182 to the county. In accordance with the Iredell County Industrial Development Incentive Program, we're requesting that the incentive be granted for Carolina Beer and Beverage for 80% of the increased tax value paid back for a period of five years. Taking depreciation of machinery into account, the maximum incentive grant for the $5 million in investment would amount to $72,893 paid over a period of five years. On a $4.4 million investment, that incentive would amount to $64,146 paid over a period of five years. Now, Carolina Beer and Beverage has been a wonderful corporate citizen to Iredell County since the beginning, since their start in 1997, and as Carolina Beer and Beverage continues to grow, we look to ensure they continue to invest and employ here in this county. On the behalf of the Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation, I want to thank you for your consideration for this incentive, and I have joining me here tonight is John, I mean, Michael Smith, the CEO of Carolina Beer and Beverage. He would like to say a few words as well.
Chairman Norman, fellow commissioners, citizens, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of our company. We're a privately-held industry in Mooresville. I remember coming to this board back in 97, when we were considering moving into Mooresville. I couldn't boast about our business because it was brand-new. We started as a very small brewery with seven employees. Over the last nine years especially, we've had the great opportunity to team with some of the largest beverage companies in the world, and we manufacture what's called functional beverages, energy drinks, teas, some of the new nutraceutical drinks that are plant in Mooresville, very high-tech filling and filling lines versus traditional soft drinks. This particular expansion is going to allow us to further deepen our relationship into some of the beverage companies we deal with, in addition to expanding jobs here in the county. It's been a tough year for us, no doubt, but I'm proud to say, we've not had to lay off anybody. We've actually added jobs through the recession. We added 30 jobs alone in 2009, and hopefully, this expansion will be along those same lines that our initial startup will add, about 20 jobs, and full capacity on that line will add somewhere around 40 jobs. With respect to your wisdom, I hope that you will consider this as an opportunity for us to continue our growth in the county. We truly are delighted to be in Mooresville. We value our participation as corporate citizens, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Shirley. Any questions? At this time, we're open for a public hearing. Anyone who has any comments, will be negative or positive, you can make those comments at this time. Anyone wishing to make comments? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. Do you want to entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make motion that we give the incentive grant ranging from $51,385 to $58,395 over a five-year period, based on an investment between $4.4 million and $5 million.
Thank you, Mr. Robson. Any questions regarding the motion? You heard the motion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise.
No.
Okay. Full one.
Thank you, Chairman Norman, and Board members. Tonight, I have a few guests with me, and I'm going to take a moment to introduce those. They're part of the project team, as we call it. We have Todd Hines and Lou Persuti from Americas Park, Jeff Stranudo, who is a landowner and housing developer in our community, Ron Johnson, chairman of the CVB and the MSIHC, and Chris Carney, Town Board member, is with us here tonight. In a few moments, I'll ask both Mr. Hines and Mr. Persuti to come up and tell you a little bit more about their project. The reason I have so many folks with me is because tonight, I'm introducing a very unique project, obviously, the first of its kind for myself as an economic developer, but it's going to have significant economic impact in Iredell County. What we're talking about here is a major youth baseball sports complex that is going to generate some 80,000-plus visitors to Iredell County during a three-month period of time. They'll generate 100,000 bed nights during that period of time, that will use hotels in Mooresville, Statesville, and quite frankly, will spill over into Mecklenburg County. There'll be about $33 million in direct spending related to those visitors, and if you take two-and-a-half times the normal multiplier effect, that's around $80 million per summer per year. The park itself is going to be around $20 million to purchase the land and construct. We're going to employ 10 to 20 people full-time, but also 500 people plus part-time, which means many of the youth in Iredell County will have an opportunity to work in a very safe, clean environment during the summer, as well as some retirees. The property tax impact, based on that investments, will generate around $70,000 per year. The sales tax impact is estimated to be at $300,000 a year, and if you take a 10-year impact of that sales, we're talking $2.8 to $3 million. Other benefits include national exposure for Iredell County, as we'll have people from all 48 states visiting. Coach, I don't know if we have anybody from Alaska playing. We do? Okay. 50 states will be playing here, and it's a quality, kid-friendly environment. Recreation leagues will also have access to the facility. It'll be our northern gateway to Mooresville, because it'll be located on Rankin Hill Road, which is basically the intersection of Cornelius Road and I-77 on the northwest quadrant. They will not compete with NASCAR events, and it's going to have a tremendous impact on small business, not only hotels, but restaurants and retailers in our communities in Iredell County, both Statesville and Mooresville. Tonight, what we're requesting is actually on behalf of the South Iredell Community Development Corporation, who will be providing a grant, a matching grant towards this project, and we're requesting that the board approve an incentive grant of $50,000 a year for 10 years, starting at such time as the improved tax value hits the tax rolls, which we anticipate to be in 2013, as the park will be completed in 2012. With that, I'd like to ask both Mr. Persuti and Mr. Hines to come up and tell you a little bit more about their operation. As you know, baseball fields are baseball fields. These are going to be high-quality, and I think the true asset is the quality the operators will have in the ownership with these two gentlemen. How are you? Thank you.
Thank you. As Russ said, Coach Persuti owns and operates Cooperstown Dreams Park, currently the largest youth baseball facility in the world, housing and hosting some 1,300 teams a year. Currently at Cooperstown, Coach Persuti turns away approximately 3,100 teams, and that is just in one age group. That's 12-year-old boys, and it's become an icon in youth baseball. It was built in 1995 and opened in '96, and has become synonymous with the Hall of Fame in Cooperstown, and it's really been a tremendous asset for the community. Cooperstown is a small town, about 2,200, 2,300 residents, and it's really had a tremendous impact on that community in a lot of different ways, and when Coach had agreed to expand, I was fortunate enough to form a partnership with Coach, and we've been to some 26 cities, invited to 26 cities to build the park, and it was great to be able to consider coming back home. I'm a resident of Mooresville, and Coach is a resident of Salisbury and operates the Dreams Park from Salisbury, so when this opportunity presented itself, we were thrilled to get off the road and have an opportunity to come back home and have an impact on our own community, to be able to employ 500 part-time workers in the summers. Wonderful, as a father of a 17-year-old daughter and a 15-year-old son in this environment, you guys know how tough it can be to find part-time work. One of the interesting things about the park is we also employ a great number of senior retirees, and they do a tremendous job, and it gives them an opportunity to supplement their income and gets them involved with the young people in the community, and that's been another tremendous benefit for us as well. Coach, did I miss anything?
This has not been a knee-jerk reaction to come here to Mooresville in this area of the country. A study has been going on for probably six or eight years in Cooperstown, a demographic study, talking to all these coaches and parents of what they would like and where they would like to go and what they would like to see, and being invited to 11 states, all wonderful states, 26 different cities, all with their arms wide open to us to commend, we decided that of all of them, that this area was the best area for, especially in this economy, being right dead center in the middle of the country, so to speak, with all the highways coming through here, the road system, but most of all, the people, and talking to the people in the greater Mooresville area about a project like this. Everyone is just absolutely excited, talking to us about it. The economic impact is second to none of tourism coming in, $3 million a week. That test, those numbers came from the University of Florida down in Tallahassee. Those numbers came in Louisville, Kentucky, and also from Albany, New York, from the state capitol, on the economic impact that goes in there. The biggest thing that Todd and I feel is, as far as not only the games and all the cultural exchange and life enrichment that these kids will have, and their parents coming from all over the country. By the way, the number-one draw that will come here will be from California. The number-two draw will be from Florida, and a number-three and four draw will be from New York and New Jersey. That's where they come from. This year, we have 14 teams from Hawaii coming to Cooperstown, and we have two teams from Alaska. Besides the continental United States, we have all states represented it. So with that being said, and our best workers, I hope these young people don't take offense, but our best workers at Cooperstown Dreams Park are the senior citizens, the people that are retired, and what a great way for 14 or 15 weeks to supplement their income. We have great stories of how these people, their quality of life has just gone up the ladder some to be able to supplement their income. So in the whole picture of this thing, I don't think Mooresville is the winner. I think baseball is the winner. I think the winner is baseball and the youth of this country to come here and play ball in a ballpark like the one that we're going to build here. It's going to be larger than Cooperstown Dreams Park. It's going to have 25 fields, not 22, and the state-of-the-art of building materials and what we expect to do, and the wonderful people here who have reached out, the corporations in this county already, reaching out to say, "How can we help? How can we get you here?" So I just want to leave with that, and thank you so much for considering who and what we are and what we're trying to do here in this county.
One last thing, too. I know the question was asked, how do we book our teams and how do we control where they stay and where they spend those dollars that we talk about in the grand scope of things, but teams are required to book their hotels through our business, our company, and our agreement with the county, with the city, is to put those folks here. We want to fill up the hotels in our community, Statesville, Mooresville, before we let any overflow go into Cornelius or any other community, so we can control that, and we intend to do that, and I think that's a big, big, big factor. You know, when you let, we've learned this watching other folks, when you let teams go wherever they will go, and you lose that control of where they stay, you know, it tends to kind of throw up a stick in the spokes. So we live here, we want to see Iredell County grow and Mooresville grow, and we certainly do appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Are you turning it up here?
Yeah, I didn't hear it in your presentation. You said there were going to be 500 or 600 part-time jobs. How many full-time jobs were there going to be?
At Cooperstown Dreams Park right now, we have about 16 full-time jobs at Cooperstown Dreams Park.
And will they be playing games at night?
Yes, they will.
Okay, so they're lighted fields?
Yes, with all the filtering systems that are needed.
And could y'all just take a minute, very briefly, and mention about the availability of those fields to local teams?
What we're going to do, we have a, we have a package that we're going to do something that no one's ever done in this country, not any of the double ABC, Pony, Babe Ruth, and Little League, Williamsport, and Ripken, and all the rest of them. What we're going to do is we're going to have a county travel league here in the county. We're going to open up to every town, every youth baseball organization, and we're going to say we're going to have a county league for them, a travel league, and then what we would like to do is that, I don't think in this county, we take the pressure off of the whole county, what those fields, because our main weeks are in the summer. Believe this or not, they don't play baseball in the summer, as you know. It's April, May, and June, and so we will accommodate, and we want to run the county leagues, if we could, out of that park. So the parks that they have now, they could use those for practice facilities and grow their leagues, but we're wide open, and we're going to make that presentation if we go further on, and this project becomes a reality.
That's good news for recreation.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to know, what age group will the teams be? The fastest-growing age group of youth baseball happens to be U-8. It's called Coach's Pitch or Machine Pitch. That's the fastest-growing, we're going to be doing that, they'll be coming from all over the country, U-9, U-10, U-11, U means under, and U-13, and girls' softball. That's what we're going to have here. By the way, in the county, it's not only baseball, it's all the youth softball programs that you have in this county, too, that we would like to be a part of, having that organization all into one.
Thank you. I appreciate it. This seals the public hearing. If anyone would love to speak at this time, have comments, whether it be positive or negative, you have that opportunity. If there's no one wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Do you entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we grant this request for an incentive grant totaling $50,000 a year over a 10-year period, based on a $16 million investment, and thank Mr. Rogerson for his hard work. This is a little bit unusual, the way we went about this, and oftentimes, people say you need to think out of the box and come up with new strategies, and this time, Mr. Rogerson did it, and I think he should be congratulated.
Sir. Thank you, Mr. Rogerson. Are there any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise.
No.
Okay, the ayes have it. Full one. And thank you very much for your support. Mr. Smith and Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. I think I'm going to give a few, give a little bit of background about this program, and then I'll turn it over to David. Back at the winter training, winter planning retreat, we were asked to take a look at an abandoned mobile home program. take a look at an abandoned mobile home program. It was a grant program that is offered by the state, specifically NC Deener. Essentially, what the program entails is that Deener is providing up to twenty-five thousand dollars a year to counties in the state that apply and are accepted into the program to help with the elimination of abandoned and demolished mobile homes. They're giving up to one thousand dollars per mobile home. That'll be in a reimbursement or a potential reimbursement to the individual that owns, owns the property. The state does have specific requirements that have to be met in order to do this. They've specifically defined what is an abandoned mobile home, what is demolished, cannot be commercial in nature, can't be manufactured home parks, things of that nature. David has worked through the solid waste plan update, which you have, and he can speak a little bit more about that, which will basically lay out the program and, and all of the requirements that, that do meet the state. What we're proposing is that we go about this on a voluntary, first-come, first-served basis. This is not a program where we're going to go out and actively look for homes to get rid of. What we envision is that we will offer up this incentive, up to a thousand dollars, in that reimbursement, and also offer up or waive tipping fees for those who voluntarily comply. Now, if it's a, if it's a code enforcement action and we are forced to eliminate, you know, have the, have the home removed, then we would not waive the tipping fees, and hopefully that would act as an extra incentive. It would be administered by solid waste, building inspections, and planning. And wanted to show you a little bit about, a little bit of research we did as we went through this program or the development of the program. We wanted to find out, well, do we even have, you know, twenty-five mobile homes to, you know, essentially get, or abandoned mobile homes to get rid of? And as you can see from this map, these are all, all of the circles or all of the dots you see are mobile homes located in the county. In the bottom corner are the values. Red dots signify homes that are valued between five hundred and essentially fifteen hundred dollars. We had, in one morning's work, I was able to find twenty that were, that, in my opinion, were reclassified as abandoned based on this map. The twenty were, you know, just in a small section of the county, so we're, we definitely have a need, if you choose, to go into the program. And finally, these are some of the situations that I found. Was not trying to pick on anyone, just, "That's my house." But, you know, we go from the extremely, extremely bad to some that just have not been lived in for some time, broken windows, things of that nature, that the weather's getting in, and very, very much could be considered uninhabitable by our building inspections program. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to David. I have attached a resolution of support if you choose to go through with the solid waste update and give us the authority to enter into the, the program and pursue the grant.
Excuse me. This was a program that the state developed a couple of years ago to be funded out of the two-dollar fund subsidy tax, so it's money actually the state's already taken from, as its opportunity to get a little bit back. In the solid waste plan update, basically, I looked at some of the approved programs and, and borrowed a little bit and added some things that fit our particular situation. I think I've come up with a plan that satisfies all the requirements of the state for this, this program. The first section being the purpose, and of course, it's to assist citizens in the cleanup and removal of abandoned manufactured housing, in the program description, which I think Ron's already covered fairly well. Definitions of what actually is an abandoned mobile home are dilapidated. One thing that, you know, may throw people off when we say abandoned manufactured homes, we're not talking about homes that people are living in. This program's not going to be used to throw people out of their homes. If you look where it's, Section Four Eligibility and Identification, it does say that it's privately-owned, it's not a part of a mobile home park, but number two says must be vacant, number three, and in need of extensive repairs exceeding fifty percent of total value are in violation of the minimum housing standards. I just took the housing standards direct from what we already have in our ordinance so that there won't be any requirement to, to adjust any of that. We go into the deconstruction process, how we identify contractors, notify them, site survey, the process they go through to deconstruct. There is a recycling requirement, and we're going to say at a minimum they need to take the frames and the axles and then the appliances that are present in the house, if any of those type of things that can be recycled, and we're going to ask them to verify where those go to. You know, we keep up with whether they bring it to the solid waste facility, to Gordon's Iron and Metal, we'll have a paper trail all the way. We have identified a process by which one form will follow this home all the way through from the time the building inspectors go out till we provide disbursement of the, the payback to the contractor. So I guess we're in agreement. We're here tonight to ask for the approval to allow us to apply for this grant and for the resolution to approve amending the solid waste plan.
Thank you, Mr. Lam. Any questions from Mr. Lam or Mr. Smith?
How, I think I asked this before, and I can't remember if we had an answer or not, but it, how much do we think that this will cost the county? I mean, in other words, we're going to get one thousand dollars from the state, but how much, how much is it really going to cost to do this?
Well, the way we anticipate this working, and it is in the, in our plan, that it won't cost the county. The only thing it would cost is in case of the voluntary applications would be the tipping fee that we'd be willing to waive it, but any cost in excess of a thousand dollars would be the responsibility of the property owner to pay that to the contractor. Now, the contractor's going to be able to keep the revenue from recyclable items, and I've been told that can amount to as much as four hundred dollars or maybe a little bit more. So I've had one large contractor tell me that he can, he can do the work for that, that kind of money, that that shouldn't be an issue.
I would assume the property value of the land goes up when the abandoned mobile home is removed?
Everything I've always heard is that, that it would.
Any other questions?
Mr. Smith, I'm assuming, because it's pretty much uniform across our ordinances here, that any mobile home that's used for agriculture, excuse me, agricultural use would be exempt from this. If someone had an old home out on the farm place, they were using it for a storage shed or something, it would be exempt.
That, that would be exempt.
Okay.
Chairman, it's voluntary, is that correct? So, okay.
And additional questions? If not, thanks, sir. Both of you. At this time, we're in a public hearing. If you have comments you'd like to make, want to be in favor or against this proposal, you can make them at this time. Come to the mic, please, identify yourself.
My name is Renee Griffith, and I have a question. How will they identify the area, the county that they'll remove the mobile homes from? How will they target that area? Just curious. Is there a plan to target a certain area of the county, or is it just sporadically county-wide? Is it only twenty that they're going to be able to remove?
Let me, let me just be able to answer that question.
It, it looks like we would have funding for up to twenty-five, and we had talked about trying to target different parts of the county, but since it's voluntary, it's going to be, probably going to end up being more of a first-come, first-served. But as you can see from that, that map, it's gone now, but the map, you know, they're dispersed all throughout the county, so, you know, it could be very well represented.
Any additional questions from anyone? Or any comments? You may do so at this time. If not, this public hearing, I'll consider it closed, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt this resolution, amending the Iredell County Solid Waste Management Plan as presented. Matter of fact, is there any need for me to read it or?
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed likewise. Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith, you get the next item, I'm pretty sure.
The next item that I have is, we've discussed this many times, but we're finally at the end. This is the Exit Forty-two roadway protection overlay. We have, we have gotten to the point of actually adopting the overlay, which is a zone, an overlay zoning district on the zoning map. And as you can see from this map, it runs from the Troutman Planning Boundary, their zoning jurisdiction, along Twenty-One, past, or Exit Forty-two and I-77, down to West Moreland Road. What we are proposing is that this be a uniform three-hundred-foot-wide corridor, one hundred and fifty feet on center, from, from point A to point B. This exempts single-family and two-family homes. The standards were those that were adopted back in March, and they are geared towards new, new commercial construction, expansions and things of that nature. If they're substantial, would apply, would, would be subject to this as well, but typically speaking, it's going to hit the new commercial development. We sent property owner notices to about a hundred people that were affected or within, within this area, and also the adjacent property owners as well, and we really have gotten no complaints or no kudos either. I think that people are pretty much resigned to the fact that we've been working on this for some time. Last time I came before you, there were some questions about the future right-of-way, and just wanted to show you that we, we put together the map that we were requested to, to develop, which we can hand out to developers or property owners that will show the specific areas where the future right-of-way is ninety feet, or where the future right-of-way is a hundred and twenty, or where it's adequate. And this was pulled directly from the Iredell County and the Town of Troutman's Comprehensive Transportation Plans. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have, but this should be treated exactly like a standard rezoning because we would be applying zoning, this, because the overlay is a zoning district.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? We're now in the public hearing. At this time, you may also add any comments or have any, if you have any questions you want to answer, this would be the time to do so.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, commissioners, I'm Albert Richardson, the Mayor of Troutman, and I just want to say that we are, we totally support this proposal.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Any other comments or any other questions at this time? Come up, sir.
I'm Tom Alexander, and, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I have a question that I would like to ask. I am the owner of the piece of property that fronts Highway Twenty-One, and beside that is Lexus Drive. At the present time, I have entrance to Highway Twenty-One, but under the new proposal, that would be closed off. My question, and maybe to someone that can answer that for me, how would we be able to, we're going to need to be able to make some way access off of our property onto the highway?
Okay. Mr. Smith, would you answer that for him?
That's a good question, because this does, this does address access standards along the roadway. Generally speaking, if you have a piece of property with an access now, that, that is going to remain to be your access. If there's a subdivision of property or a combination of property, that's when the standards would apply. So, so generally speaking, I would say that you're going to be okay without looking at it specifically, but we did not intend to cut off access from anyone. Basically, as the property develops, that is when the access standards would come into play.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there any questions, additional questions that anyone would like to ask at this time? Or any comments you'd like to make? If not, I declare the public hearing closed, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion that we approve this roadway protection overlay as presented by Mr. Smith. And if I could, I would like to offer a couple of comments.
You may.
When Troutman came to us, oh, three years ago, I believe it was, and asked for the ability to satellite annex it at Forty-two, asking if they would, that I thought the board would be willing to grant that request, if they would be willing to do a roadway protection overlay. I made that request in, in times of, of economic growth, when there was a lot of building going on and so forth, and I really thought this would be a stop-cap measure until we could get some agreement with Troutman on zoning in that area to protect land values and the road itself. Not realizing at the time what I was going to put everybody through, but I appreciate everybody's work, and I think the, the end product is good. That's not the essence of what I, I want to say, though. I, I think honestly, this is the first step in a process. I think the best way, long-term, to guarantee good economic growth with good tax base at Exit Forty-two, north and south of there, is to have it in our unified development ordinance that we're drawing up now to grant Troutman some ETJ along the properties that front Forty-two. I think it's necessary to do that to protect Troutman, because without some protection or some control over what goes there, they're going to be less than, less willing to invest in the water and sewer, in the extension of that water and sewer, and that's a major capital expense for them. So that would help reduce their hesitancy to do so, which helps them create tax base, upscale tax base, certainly, that consequently increases our tax base. After that, it gets a little trickier, but I have great confidence we can work it out, because one, one concern I expressed early was the availability of outlying parcels to market their property. But I had an opportunity to look at their plan, their signed ordinance, and they did an outstanding job on it. They've got a plan in place that's going to create tax base down there, and it's going to be the kind of tax base that you need to pay the bills, and I think they're to be congratulated. Once the UDO is in place, and we agree on the ETJ, I think we should move forward and work with Troutman on an urban service area in the outlying areas, because it is in the outlying areas that can be detrimental to the county as far as development, because that's where the density of development will occur, which will burden our schools and burden our roads. But with mutually agreed-upon standards, I think we can have the type of development that will be mutually beneficial and do no harm to anyone. So I, I think in the future, that's what we ought to work together with these folks, and I just wanted to say that. They've expressed a willingness, and I'll be perfectly fair. Every time I bring this up, Mr. Mayor always says, "Steve, you know, we didn't ask for this." But they didn't ask for it, but I think, I think they've demonstrated the ability to handle it and do a good job, and I think it'd be in the interest of both parties to proceed with that.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. Any other comments, questions before? Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed likewise. I'll have it. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, I'm going to turn it over to you at this time.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we'll go into the administrative matters now, and the first item under this is going back And the first item under this is going back to Ron Smith concerning the Statesville Comprehensive Transportation Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Nadine Bennett is here from Central Island Council of Governments. They've been working to put together transportation analysis zone numbers for the development of the comprehensive transportation plan for Statesville. So I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Nadine.
Aye. And as Ron said, we are working on these numbers. They're economic, they're employment and population estimates and projections. And we've been working on them for the Statesville Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And the CTP, as I'm sure you know, is something that's mandated by the state, better. It's mandated by the state. And what it is, it's a multimodal plan that consists of four elements, roadway, bicycle, pedestrian, and transit. And it's used by local governments, RPOs, DOT. And it's for identifying land reservation for future transportation corridors, and it does help guide decision-making. In this five-step process, we are actually on step number two right now, which is the data collection. That includes the local approval of the data, and Statesville, I should mention, has already approved the numbers here. This is the area, it's a little bit fuzzy up there, but you can see Statesville in yellow, and then around it, in the dotted line, is the area. And the reason that we include it, that the county is even involved, is you've got to do the area surrounding Statesville as well. And why is the data collected? Kind of obvious that you just want to base your travel demand model on, you know, as much information as you can. So that's why we're doing that data right now. We based this on 1980 through 2000 census, North Carolina Employment Security Commission, Iredell Statesville School District, and really heavily relied on information that was provided by ESRI, which is the Environmental Systems Research Institute. And they had 2009 data down to the block group, actually not to the block group, by census tract. And we just had to split it from there into the TAZs. So what we did was, we came up with a base year, which is 2009, and then projected to 2040. And I'm going to go through the maps, actually, the employment categories, industrial, retail, high-traffic retail, service, and office. And establish the study areas, and then we just assigned the data to the, from the block groups down to the TAZ levels. And we also ran it by Statesville and the county before we came here, just to get their approval of it in advance. For 2040, we used, basically Bjorn Hansen did that, I believe he's spoken to you before, used a number of different methods to calculate the 2040 projections. And these are the results, and I'm going to go through the maps, and I'll go through them, but if you have a question on any given map, just go ahead and stop me right there, and I can try and explain. This is 2009 population. Any questions on that? I could try to explain the whole thing, but I think that might take a little time, so I'll just keep. The increase in population from 2009 to 2040. And it kind of went south to north and stayed along 77 and 40. And then the one, the bright red one down there is a development, I believe, that's already approved, and is going to jobs and housing as well. For overall employment, this is 2009. For increase in employment, and again, this kind of goes south to north and follows 77 and 40, and focuses pretty heavily on the area where there's already a large development approved. So, this is the schedule, and we're at the very end of the schedule right now. It's already been recommended by the Statesville Planning Board and also approved by Statesville. And it was recommended by the county, and now it's up to you guys. And if you want me to go back to any of the maps, just let me know.
Ma'am, as far as the areas where you were anticipating to grow faster than others, the basis for that was pre-approved plans by the City of Statesville primarily?
That one area right there where, I mean, that shows the real increase in jobs, that, you know, kind of tremendous, that was based on a plan that's already approved. And some of the others were, you know, corridors that we seem to be developing. Kind of mesmerizing, isn't it?
Ms. Bennett, what what happens if we were to vote no on this, just out of curiosity?
Certainly would like to know your reasons for voting no on it, and we would probably, we would just try and address any of your concerns on it.
I mean, what would be the consequences if after a long week, month-long debate, we still voted no? What are the consequences of that?
The state couldn't use it. So we'd probably just have to go back to the drawing board.
Okay, and
But obviously, first, we would like to try and address any concerns that you have.
Well, my only concern, Mr. Chairman, was just, I'm not sure exactly what we're voting on, but I was reading the front of the memo here, and it says, "I would respectfully ask that you review these numbers and endorse them if you agree with their accuracy."
Right.
And of course, there's a matrix here with 1, 2, 3, 4, times 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. So 40 numbers for me to review and agree with the accuracy. And of course, I'm a dentist and don't know much about any of these numbers. So for me to agree with the accuracy would be a little bit silly.
We had run them by county staff in the first place to see, to get their input on them as well.
And I can endorse Mr. Smith and his work. I have every confidence in him and probably in you, if, you know, if I knew of your work more. But I guess the question is, are we endorsing the work of these people and endorsing their abilities and our confidence in their abilities, or are we literally, as it says on the front of here, endorsing and agreeing with these numbers? And I'm just telling you, much as I'd like to agree with these numbers, I have no idea if these numbers are off by 100.
Right, and being off by 100?
No, I mean 100%, sorry.
I was going to say, 100 wouldn't really matter that much, but sir, go ahead.
I just, I just didn't know what we're voting on exactly. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Cato, that's an extremely valid point. Just a little bit of background on how we came up with these. Working with the Lake Norman RPO and with the state, as well as with the City of Statesville staff, my staff more or less tried to verify the numbers that were given to us all down the line. Even when we got to, got to the planning board, and this, this large area, this TAZ out in the eastern part of the area, kind of stuck out, because it's, you know, one of the, well, that's a high, it's a high-population area. Well, we looked at it, wondered why we didn't catch it in the first place, but then looked back at it again, and Eleanor Hiltz in our office is our transportation person, and, you know, it was very, very close. So we've looked at it and re-looked at it, as well as the city, the city staff has as well, so.
And in terms of that one area right there, it's when the concern was expressed about it, we went back to the 2000 census numbers to see if we were wildly off on our, what we were saying was the 2009 number, and we weren't. So we checked it, rechecked it, they checked it. And the comments that we got as well were really based on things that were on the ground here, too. I mean, Eleanor, her comments back, where, you know, "This area right here, I'm not, that number seems off, because I don't know of anything there," or "I think you're missing this big thing right here." So there's a lot of back and forth on it.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is certainly, it was never a question of whether the numbers are accurate. It's a question of the sensibility of me or any of you saying whether these numbers are accurate.
The way I, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
The way I interpreted what we're voting on is, is if Ms. Bennett came up here, and we asked her questions, and and then Ron Smith, if he asked her questions, because he didn't know anything about it, well, that tells me that, well, maybe they've not tapped into the local resources, and her data might not be accurate. The fact that it was apparent from the beginning that our planning department was involved gives me confidence that the numbers are more accurate than if they had not been involved. So to me, that vote, our vote, is merely a vote of recognition that the local people that we deem have expertise in these things were involved, and therefore, the data's probably more accurate than not. Is that a fair assumption of what we're voting on?
Okay.
I would agree that the numbers are probably pretty accurate on population. And this is not a slight to anybody. The thing that'll be difficult, the measure, is where your employment centers are going to be. Because we've been very close two times in extending water, I mean, sewer, up 21 to the next exit, the auto aux, only to fall through at the last minute. Well, the day that happens, then the nature of that corridor is going to change.
Right.
And it's going to increasingly become a commercial.
And of course, any projections, I mean, you're going to run into that kind of problem.
There's no way to figure that in, so again, no slight to you, but your projections on employment centers are difficult to figure, because there's just, it's imponderable how many variables can be involved. But your population, I think you're reasonably accurate on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I think the action that's requested is that the board take a vote as to whether or not at least they concur that those numbers are reasonably accurate and allow the process to proceed forward.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just said the words, so I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion on the floor. Any questions regarding the motion?
I'd just request a hear it spoken out or written down.
Are you speaking of the motion?
Of the motion, yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we deem this report accurate. And I guess we're going to submit it to the DOT.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise.
No.
Okay. For one.
At this time, we have a request from the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council to approve their 10,000, or the 2010-11 funding plan. I believe Pam Davis, who is the chair, is here to make that presentation.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Pam Davis, and I come to request approval for the 2010-2011 funding plan, which is in a total amount of $286,796 for the JCPC, which was approved on April the 13th by the JCPC. We allocated monies to different programs in Iredell County, beginning with Bramon Springs, which was 96, 250, Avalon Farms, 6,500, At-Risk, 52,796, Piedmont Mediation, 32,000, Don Lynn Counseling, which is 18,500, and Project Challenge, $65,249, and the JCPC Administration, 15,500. And we ask for approval for this monies.
Do you have any questions? Ms. Davis? Give us a few minutes, Ms. Davis. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the county manager.
Okay.
I usually ask you if you don't have a comment. Why, you normally recommend approval, and sometimes you don't, so this is one of those times. Well, at this particular, when, because of limited time, I had not, when it was presented to me and I had to get on the agenda, adequate time to review all this. But I do know that we had staff members that were, that are involved in this, and Ms. Blumenstein did research a couple of the questions that we had. And I believe the staff has no problem recommending, at this point, has no problem recommending that the board approve this budget for JCPC.
Okay.
And these are mainly pass-through funds.
That is correct.
These are not county dollars.
So if we don't take action, we're going to lose the 287,000, is that what it is?
That's correct. And if I'm not mistaken, are any of these new programs, or most of these?
These are not new programs. Only one that's new is Avalon, and actually, they was on it last year. We just had to pull monies away from them.
Yeah.
Because we was cut.
Okay. You heard the proposal. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve this request, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you.
Next item is a request to approve a budget amendment for the Sheriff's Department or Sheriff's Office. Mike Phillips, I think, is going to make that presentation.
Good evening. We're seeking consent for a budget amendment in the amount of $77,457. This is to purchase 22 800-megahertz radios. These radios will work on the Viper system, and we'll use them for several different purposes. It's not only issuing them to officers, but we'll also have them for spares when the ones that our officers do carry that go down. And we'll also be able to issue some to other agencies, such as the Fire Department, Emergency Medical Service, and different agencies whenever there's a major emergency or some special event where we've got different agencies coming in and working, we'll all be able to communicate with each other. And this will be seized funds that we're moving.
Seized funds. Any questions? Mr. Phillips? Any questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve Budget Amendment 67 to purchase the radios for the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, we heard the motion. Are there any questions regarding the motion?
This is a wise purchase right here. This is good use of that money.
If no questions, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
Don Longley, DSS Director, will present Budget Amendment Number 68 to appropriate some additional funds.
Chairman, Commissioners, our agency has received additional funding in our child daycare program and in our crisis intervention program. We received $90,000 for our child daycare. And this is federal and state money. We received 100 additional, 100,000 in our crisis intervention. This is 100% federal fund, so there's no county funds involved. And we request that the Commissioners approve Budget Amendment Number 68 to recognize these additional funds.
Any questions, Mr. Wall?
Is this an anticipated injection of funds, or, I mean, is this part of a routine, or is this totally unexpected and a surprise?
It's not unexpected. Every year, we get additional funding throughout the year. We usually get our base funding at the first of the year, but as the federal government gives more money, it comes to us. And like the daycare, we can get, provide more daycare for children on our waiting list. We have about 800 to 900. We have about 800 to 900 children on our waiting list in child daycare, and, but we get it periodically.
Okay. Additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Wall.
Thank you.
If not, are we entertaining a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise.
Health Director Donna Campbell will make a presentation on budget amendment number 69 of transfer of funds.
Earlier this fiscal year, the commissioners approved us receiving a grant from North Carolina DHHS, and that was to be used to educate the local restaurants and bars about the implementation of the new non-smoke-free restaurant and bar law. And what I'm here tonight is to request a budget amendment to move some money around within that particular grant. We're asking to be able to move money to purchase some additional no-smoking signs and also to move some money into salary and fringe. There are existing funds within this grant to cover this budget amendment.
Any questions?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. Any questions regarding the motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise. Thank you.
Finance Director Susan Blumenstein will present budget amendment number 70 to appropriate fund balance and workers' compensation.
We've had additional workers' compensation claims come in in the last couple of months that have exceeded the amount that I'd requested a budget amendment for earlier. We've had some major claims this year, and we anticipate our total claims cost this year will be 602,000. For the last five years, we've averaged 315,000 a year, so this is a, this is an extraordinary year, and I'd request the board to approve this so we can make these claims payments. It will still leave $1,420,000 in fund balance in that self-insurance fund.
Any questions, Ms. Blumenstein? All in favor of the motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise.
One alibi question, that should get us through the end of this fiscal year.
Yes. Jean Hahn is here as well, and she works on filing those claims with our third-party administrator, and I asked them to look very closely at all outstanding claims and give me the best number that they could at this point.
Is there anything that's happened this year that makes us think that next year we're not going to revert back to that? You said it was 315,000 norm. Do you think we're going to go back to the 315, or we're going to stay at some elevated level above that?
I think it will be some elevated level because of a major claim that we've had that will probably require an additional surgery and out-of-work time early in the next fiscal year. Is that fair?
Boy, we're just on a string of bad luck, don't we?
Yeah.
Where are we at?
Wait a minute, Mr. Mayor.
Did you, I didn't hear you vote, I'm sorry.
No, we need to make, I'll make the motion to approve budget amendment 70.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise.
Ms. Blumenstein, are you handling item H as well, the Ebenezer Volunteer Fire Department?
I'll be glad to, to explain the information that was included in the package. At the last meeting in April, there was a request from Ebenezer Volunteer Fire Department to get board confirmation of their intended borrowing from BBNT. Annual debt service on that note is $130,000 a year, and the board didn't have, we didn't have a lot of information for you at that time of what the next year's budget looked like for the countywide fire tax district. Included in your package is an estimate of real property valuations by fire department, because what I was trying to show to you, and I believe it was requested, is the effect on the countywide fire tax district if Lake Norman Volunteer Fire Department pulled out in the next few years at the end of their commitment to stay in. So, using the real property values provided by Mr. Doolittle's office, I applied that pro-rata share to the total estimated FY11 value by fire department. Using that data, if you look at Schedule B, I've estimated the revenues based on what I expect to collect next fiscal year. And then I allocated that, the expenditures that were proposed in the FY11 budget that the fire tax board approved and submitted through the fire marshal's office. So, the Schedule B includes all the valuation that's known at this time. It does show the $130,000 approved for debt. It was recommended by the fire tax board for Ebenezer. And then the third page, which is marked C in the upper right-hand corner, shows that same funding if Lake Norman Volunteer Fire Department is not a part of the calculation. Now, I know it's not going to happen in FY11, but with revow coming up, I was not comfortable with data that we have now to try to project to the point in time when they would not be a part of the countywide fire district if they do move out. So, what this shows is the amount of expenditures that would be over the amount levied for a net loss of $1,128 expenditures in excess of revenues. It would take approximately a three-cent tax rate increase to fund the fire departments at the same levels that they are now if Lake Norman pulls out.
Any questions for Ms. Blumenstein? If not, do we have a motion? For the question?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to offer a motion, we'll go ahead and let these gentlemen proceed with securing this loan. I think we've got some ethical obligation to do so because they're well into the process. And even if we did this and Lake Norman pulled out, which they can't do right now per agreement till, what, 2014, Mr. Robinson?
13.
13. Then it wouldn't appreciably add to the misery. But having said that, because I feel an obligation that we brought them this far, we need to go ahead. I think we've come to the point, and I spoke with Mr. Frank Phillips earlier, and there are no more major capital projects related to buildings and the pipeline. But just so that there's no misunderstanding, I think if we're to, if we're to keep a handle on this, I think this needs to be the last one for a while. And I think it needs to be the last one for a while for at least a couple of reasons. And the first is, we don't know what Lake Norman's going to do. And we sat in a meeting the other night where they expressed a desire to stay in the countywide fire district based upon some conditions, which, on the surface, did not seem to be unreasonable. So, we may have to give them a little more revenue, and they understand we can't be totally fair, but we can be a little more equitable based upon the percentage of revenue that they supply. The second reason is, is because we're coming up on reevaluation, and we may be taxing property value that exists now, but it may not exist in two years, depending on what property values do. And I think it's time that we, we take a pause and we get a handle on this thing before we, before we even begin the process of someone else investing a huge sum of money like this. My motion's going to be twofold. We'll go ahead and grant this request, but it shall be the policy of this board not to grant any more such requests until a time, till some future date after, at least after reevaluation, and an agreement is signed with the Lake Norman Fire Department.
Okay. All right. Okay, you've heard the motion, are there questions regarding the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Hold on, one second, I think. Is that just, that's just for buildings? That doesn't include apparatus like trucks, pumper?
Yeah, I gave that some thought, and I left that out purposely, Mr. Robinson, because some of that apparatus is related to the reduction of insurance ratings. So, I didn't want to, I didn't want to knock them out of that.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any additional questions? Not all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise.
All right. Next item is also presented by Ms. Blumenstein with the assistance of Jean Hahn concerning change of policies.
We're doing everything possible to try to cut our cost in any way that we can, and Jean did an excellent job in going out and obtaining quotes, working with our BBNT web. And we have received proposals from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, from Argonaut, who is our current property and liability carrier, and also from the Travelers. We found that we can enjoy a savings of almost $60,000 next year by moving to the Travelers. It's a comparable plan. We're very satisfied with what they've provided, and I think in some respects, it's a little more comprehensive than our current plan. Jean would know the specifics, but as a matter of fact, we'll be able to get three years' worth of pollution control liability for solid waste for only about 20% more than what we're paying for one year with Argonaut. So, we've been able to negotiate some good rates, and if the board so chooses to move forward with this, we would need a motion to cancel Argonaut policies and bind coverage with Travelers effective July 1st, 2010.
What prompted y'all to review this policy? Are y'all just going through and looking at all of our policies, or did y'all suspect that this one was out of, out of kilter with what the marketplace could do? I mean, what, you know, what was the mechanism that got this thing rolling?
Well, we've been with Argonaut for a couple of years, and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, of course, always wants our business if they can provide the best deal. And we felt like that we couldn't take, we didn't want to get quotes from one insurer without getting quotes from a third.
Okay.
So, that was the main reason Jean decided, and we talked about it and decided it was a good time to go out, especially trying to save money anywhere we could.
Are there other insurance policies we have where we could do this?
Travelers really has everything, or we work through BBNT web for everything except for our health insurance and our nurses' liability. I believe medical liability is a different policy, but this is our prop, our fixed property, movable equipment, vehicle policy, property, and all of our liability insurances, our pollution control, even our landfill liner is included in this one. That's correct.
Susan, are these policies claims-made policies or occurrence policies?
They are. I'm going to let Jean speak to that, because some are.
All of these policies are occurrence policies. The only policies that are claims-made are the professional, the professional liability, the law enforcement liability.
So, we won't have any gap in coverage at all?
Sure. And the policy, with Travelers picking it up, they're doing a retroactive date when we move from the pool to Argonaut, so they'll be covered.
Susan, the other one, I guess that's North Carolina Association of County Commissioners property and liability?
Yes, sir.
Where were they at? Were they sky-high, or were they in the ballpark?
Not, no, they were substantially more, 927,000, excuse me, 925,700 was their proposal. So, this, you know, and we've had years in the past where they, they had the best rates, but we haven't seen those in the last few years, and we did move away from them a few years ago.
Any additional questions?
Somebody needs to buy that lady lunch.
Okay, if not, do we have a motion to approve?
Good job.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion to approve. Any questions regarding the motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed.
Thank you.
One of Mr. Doolittle's last official acts was to recommend that the county commissioners approve the April 2010 refunds and releases. He's left those here and recommends their approval.
He hit the road, didn't he?
All I have to say is that was a lackluster presentation of memo 13. I find myself uninspired by your presentation. You are obviously no Bill Doolittle, but I'll, I'll make the motion that we accept your refunds and releases as presented.
Okay, motion approved. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Mr. Pope, I think you have item K concerning ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act.
Mr. Chairman, you and the commissioners asked me to investigate whether the county was in compliance with the ADA and other regulations pertaining to hearing-impaired citizens. And I, I did investigate that, and I found that, I believe that substantially we are in compliance. I did, I did make a recommendation to you that I think would make it clearer that we are and would also serve to publicize to the, to the hearing-impaired public that we are. And that is a notice on the back of that memo 14. It's my suggestion to you that you adopt this notice and that you ask the staff to publish this notice by posting it at appropriate bulletin boards in the county buildings where public hearings are held. That is hearings by the county commission, the planning board, board of adjustment, health department, and other county authorities or agencies or boards.
Any questions regarding the ADA requirement? If not, entertaining a motion, did we adopt that?
Motion to adopt Mr. Pope's recommendation.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed likewise.
Last time, last item under the administrative matters is approval of the April 6 and 20 minutes.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve?
No, no. I withdraw my motion. Somebody else make it. We had this trouble last time.
No, not you.
One of them pertains to the meeting I wasn't present.
Okay.
That's the April 6 meeting.
Yeah.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion approved. Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Announcement vexes occurring on boards and commissions?
We also need the April 20.
Okay. These those approved too. Motion to approve the April 20 meeting.
I'll so move, Mr. Chairman.
So move? Okay. Any questions regarding those? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Announcement vexes occurring on boards and commissions, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, seven announcements. Central, Central Island Workforce Development Board, two announcements. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, one announcement. Appointments to the boards and commissions, we, we have any, any whatsoever?
I'll remind you where it is.
Yeah, I have, I have one.
Okay.
Mr. Phil Collins over at the city helped me find, we find somebody for the State's full board of adjustment, ETJ, and I'd like to place a nomination, Mr. David Aman.
David Aman?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
And for future information, he's reviewing the population inside the ETJ at this time. We may be eligible for another representative. He's going to let me know. He's gonna let me know.
Okay. Any other announcements, or any other number leads for board adjustments? There's a motion for David Aman. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Does it have any more than anyone else has?
Nothing I know of.
Public comment period? Mr. Ryan Pettit, are you here?
Yes.
You wanna come up now?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. You guys may have received in the mail over the past week a invitation to the Moore'sville Lake Norman, the Moore'sville Memorial Day Field of Flags. Five years ago, the Moore'sville Lake Norman Exchange Club hosted its first annual Memorial Day Field of Flags, and estimated 1,500 local citizens attended to honor the American veterans and the men and women currently serving in armed forces. Hundreds of American flags, flags were lined on the Moore'sville High School football field as a sign of national pride and sacrifice. Each flag was purchased in honor or in memory of a person who has served in our armed forces. The proceeds went to the Idaho County Chapter of the Stop Child Abuse Now, which is an organization devoted to the prevention of child abuse. We are inviting all the commissioners to the event again. We hope that you guys will be able to attend. If you are be able to attend, please see me after. We just wanted to let you guys be aware of the event. It is going to be held Memorial Day at 11 o'clock at the Moore'sville High School baseball field. It's a great event. Also Lieutenant Governor Walter Dalton will be in attendance, just to let you guys know, he is gonna be our keynote speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before he leaves, this is a special young man. Would you state your name clearly so everybody can hear?
Ryan Peggarsch.
And you are a scout?
No, I'm a United States Naval Sea Cadet Corps.
A sea cadet, I'm sorry, that's right. You're a sea cadet, and do you volunteer for any other county service organization?
I volunteer for Shepherd's Volunteer Fire Department.
And you're organizing this event?
Yes, sir.
And do you attend school?
Yes, sir.
Where?
I go to South Idaho High School.
Okay. Anytime people think that the youth of the nation don't have, don't have it together, you look at, at young people like this, and there are plenty of folks that, that are doing good things out there, so thank you very much for this.
Thank you, sir.
Outstanding.
Thank you. Any new business at this time? Any new business?
Mr. Chairman, have, have we decided we're gonna talk about this healthcare insurance business, or are we gonna, we putting that off for another time? Paying for abortions and all this bit? Is this something that needs to be brought up, or something we want to talk about later, or?
I'll, I'll let the commissioner address that.
I'm not prepared to discuss it tonight.
Okay.
You want to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, or?
I've just seen two or three memos about it over the weeks and didn't know when we were gonna talk about it, or if we were gonna talk about it.
I had not planned to actually put it on unless it was requested to. If, if it's put, if you want it put on the next agenda, we'll be glad to, of course, to do that.
Sure. Okay.
So is that, is that my understanding that you would like to have this item on the agenda for the June 1 meeting?
I, I would, without objection.
Anyone else?
They'll be fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Messer, your, your report?
Well, actually, the, the main item that I've got tonight is to present to you the proposed FY 10-11 budget, and because they've gotten so large as far as the size of the budget over the years, we, we quit bringing them up here and ask you to pick them up as you leave, but I would like to highlight a couple of things that, that you'll find on that, and then we need to talk for just a moment about confirmation of when the, the dates and the times that you want to start your budget workshops. You know, as you get older, you start reminiscing and having an opportunity to look at this budget process again. Of course, reminded me that this is my 36th budget that I've presented to boards and commissions over the years, and the very first one that I presented, I was 28 years old, I had dark hair, almost as dark as Mrs. Blumenstein's. I weighed about 200 pound, and, and the only thing, conclusion that I really have drawn over those 36 years is that I'm convinced that there's a direct correlation between the increase in the budgets and the increase in the manager's waistline. Other than that, I'm not sure that I can say that you can carry a lot from one year to the next, because every year is definitely different, and this year is no exception to that. We knew going into this year that it was gonna be a tough year, and, and it has been, and it, and it will probably continue to be tough, at least for another year, and maybe for, for more than that. Hopefully, it's gonna be easier than this one, but still, it's, they're gonna be tough for a couple of years, probably. I do have some prepared comments that I'm gonna make. It's only a couple of pages, and I do want to make those, but I know that the real thing you're interested in is, you know, how, how's it coming out overall? And overall, what we see is a revenue that we project to be 148 million plus, and expenditures recommended to be 150 million plus, with a difference of $2,245,065. Now, in accordance with the county commissioners' earlier directives, we do anticipate using $2 million out of the fund balance for the current year. We budgeted $2 million, $2 million in the next year. We budgeted $2 million in the current year, but we did not spend all of that $2 million, or we do not anticipate at, at the present time that we will spend all of that, and we do have $245,000 that we are recommending be carried over into next year and, and add that to the $2 million that we will be, that we were authorized to pull out of the fund balance for next year. What that does, it leaves you an estimated unreserved, undesignated fund balance on June 30 of 2011 of $23,562,425, or a fund balance of 15.7%. So we're still keeping our fund balance at or near what, what the board's policy has been, that we keep that. Now, let me talk to you what's in the budget and a few things that's not in the budget. This proposed budget is submitted in accordance with the North Carolina Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act, and as I indicated, usually a major portion of a proposed budget's based on estimates. I mean, there are some givens, but there, most of it is estimates, as you know, and up until the last couple of years, we could almost estimate both revenues and expenditures with some degree of certainty and reliability. Things are not that certain anymore, so the reliability of those estimates may become more suspect. But even so, the North Carolina statutes mandate that the county adopt a fiscal plan each year using the very best information available, and I want to say at this time that Susan Blumenstein, Bill Doolittle, and others who estimate revenues and expenses, they are to be commended for their diligence in pursuing a level of confidence so that the risk that we're asking you to take is at the very lowest level possible. The, the proposed FY 10-11 expenditures actually are a total decrease of 2.5% from the current year. Now, that's a total decrease. That includes all, all expenditures. But when you look at the, just the amount of county funds that go into this budget, you see an actual 4% reduction in the amount of county funds going in to balance the budget. And that number is even more significant when you understand that the state continues to chisel down state shared revenues and at the same time place additional unfunded mandates on the county. Some examples of this are the withholding of 2/3 of our current year's distribution of our legal share to the beer and wine taxes, which is estimated to be $285,900. Also, the state eliminated funding of the intensive probation office, adding another $40,800 to the budget. The state also discontinued reimbursement to the county for sentenced inmates, adding another $80,000 to our budget. Because of the tremendous downturn in the economy, the county's contribution to the local government employees' retirement system was increased from 4.89% to 6.44%, adding another $427,578 to the budget. These items alone total almost $835,000, or almost a half cent on the tax rate. Those are additions or mandates that were put on, on top of what we saw as far as what was happening to our revenue. In addition to that, we have additional expenditures to operate a new branch library in Troutman, as well as funds to provide for limited operations on the new EMS base at the Troutman Volunteer Fire Department substation. Economic development also increased $953,000 for new incentive payments, but of course, because incentives are not paid unless the new tax base is increased to support the payment, the potential impact on the budget is negligible, at least for the first five or six years, and then hopefully it's gonna be to the good moving on from, from that. Not included in the proposal this year is a request from the City of Statesville for a matching grant for airport improvements. However, obligations that were already made are budgeted, and $164,318 for land purchase is being carried forward in, from the current year to next. Some other things that are not in the budget. There are no salary increases. This is the second year in a row that will be no salary increases for county employees. There were new positions that were added by the board during the current year, but those were paid for out of non-county funds, will not, and will not require county funding for FY 11, but those are the only new positions that we will have in two years. In addition, 18 additional positions were frozen, and no funds were allocated, bringing the total to 29 positions frozen or eliminated. Appropriations for salaries and employee benefits are reduced by over $900,000 from FY 10. Yet, I see no need at this time for any furlough days next year, or no salary reductions. We will see a reduction in part-time positions at the library. However, working with the library director, Steve Messick there, we believe that we can provide a, a schedule that will minimize the overall impact on us in delivering the services to our citizens at the library. There's no major changes or, and, except maybe some hours of operation in order to accomplish that. It should come as no surprise that very little is being recommended for capital expenditures for the coming year. Most of what has been recommended for, is for technology replacements of obsolete and inadequate equipment. We have just a little over $400,000 being recommended in the general fund for capital equipment, and some of that will be covered by grants or other non-county funds. I am recommending, however, that the balance remaining in the capital reserve fund, which is approximately $250,000, be appropriated for the adoption of a jail and courts expansion capital project fund to begin planning for increase in those space needs. Those are gonna be the, the biggest needs that you're gonna be faced when we get to the point that we can afford to do something, and the, the planning process is probably gonna take a couple of years, so if we don't get started on that, then we'll be behind when we, when it's time to get started. So I am recommending that we put $250,000 to go toward beginning that planning process. Big item, of course, is the appropriation to the schools, and overall, it's a decrease of 3%. You can remember when the schools came before you and, and talked about what the state is doing to them, and everything from not adequately funding for textbooks to other things that they will not be able to do because of the decrease in state fundings. There is no way that we can make up what the state has, has taken away from the schools, and, and it becomes necessary even for us to decrease the funding by 3%. Even so, the appropriation to the, to the school system, or all the school systems, has increased to 54.58%. That's not a significant increase, but it does show that they are taking a larger share of the funds that we have going to education. Although we've held our own so far this year in the collection, the amount of, that was budgeted from property taxes, which is only 1.2% is being budgeted for next year. 1.2% increase in property taxes is what we're projecting at this time. That's based on the increase in tax base, or collections, or, or other things. That, that's basically staying flat. You know, we, we hope that we're correct on that. We have every reason to believe that we're correct on that, that we're gonna stay flat, at least for the, for the current year, or for the next budget year, on the collection of property taxes. Now, we do anticipate a collection rate of 96.89%. On the other hand, sales taxes, which makes up 15.13% of our revenue, is also expected to stay flat. We're, we're probably taking a little bit of stepping out on faith, a little bit more in that one than we are the property taxes. Ms. Blumenstein, we get the next one tomorrow, so we'll have a little bit better idea tomorrow what February did, but see, we're three months behind, so we really don't know what took place in March and April, and what's taking place now in May, so tomorrow we'll know what took place in, in February. We do have some small increases in some of the other revenue sources, such as the register of deeds, animal control, and fund balance. The increase in fund balance is being used to balance the budget is made possible by expended, as I said earlier, $245,000 less this year than we had anticipated spending. My conclusion is this. It is recommended that the commissioners approve the proposed FY 10-11 budget as it's presented. If so approved, it will leave the property tax rate at 44 and a half cents per $100 valuation, and that's based on the tax assessor's estimate of a tax base of $20,639,300. If the proposed budget is approved, it will be a spending plan that is $14.3 million less than the current year, and $30 million less than FY 08 and 09. Using the $2,245,000 from the fund balance will leave the county's fund balance, as indicated before, at 15.7% of budgeted expenditures. You know, and, and I can go into more- You know, and I can go into more detail, and of course, we will go into more detail when we have our first work session, which is scheduled for May the 20th. Or I'll try to respond, and Ms. Blumstein can, or Tracy, we've all been working on this together, to any questions that you may have now.
Any questions?
Joe, when did the state, when did the state take action on those unfunded mandates? Was that done during the last legislative session, or was this a gubernatorial?
Part of it was gubernatorial. The legislative part had to do with the inmates that we had to pick up the $80,000. That was legislative. Someone, I don't know where this came from exactly, but the intensive probation, for years and years and years, the state paid for the rental of those offices across the street, and that was a program that came in that was kind of an experimental program, and it never went away. But the state, when they first started, they paid for those offices. You know, traditionally, we pay for probation and parole offices, but for years and years and years, they paid for those because that was a new program, it's kind of experimental to begin with, and the state continued to pay for it. Well, the state decided, all of a sudden, and I can't remember if it was at the beginning of the year, or which?
In September.
In September, they decided, after we'd already started our budget, after we'd already adopted our budget, they decided that, hey, that's your responsibility, you're going to do it. Well, they had accepted that responsibility for years and years and years, so, you know, and then to dump it on us in the middle of the year like that, after we'd already adopted our budget. A lot of it is gubernatorial reductions.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to make a few comments.
Go ahead.
Even though you've not officially handed us the budget, you know, we've been talking about the budget amongst ourselves and also with you, and I would just like to make some points now, and as we go through the budget process, I want to keep making them, because I really think that people, that the citizens, need to understand what's going on and what it means for this budget cycle and what it means for future ones. Right now in America, everybody, one of the buzzwords is sustainability. You know, if we're going to have energy, it needs to be sustainable energy. Food supplies need to be sustainable. The environment, business and people's impact on the environment needs to be sustainable. Really, when you look at it, even the financial system needs to be sustainable. It made no sense to, for our building industry, to go on this big surge of building McMansions, and we ended up having a housing bubble, and it burst. It wasn't a sustainable model, and as those of us who heard about, you know, zero principal loans and artificially low interest rates with big balloon payments 10 years out. I mean, everybody knew that that wasn't sustainable. It couldn't go on, and it didn't. And as I hear you talking, I mean, I really, I mean, this is a budget that, in all likelihood, we're going to adopt as it is, or fairly close to it, and that doesn't mean that it's bad, but clearly, I don't think that this budget is sustainable. I mean, we've not been replacing vehicles. You know, county employees don't ride around in brand-new vehicles every year. There's a, so when we talk about buying vehicles, it's not like we're buying vehicles so everybody has the latest and the greatest model. When vehicles become more expensive to maintain than to operate, than it is to buy new ones, then you got, then it makes sense to buy new ones. But we're not replacing the vehicles as we should. Historically, this county has, this board, and the board's long before I ever stepped foot here, set aside money for capital improvement to build buildings, so that we didn't, so that the money that the taxpayers put towards building paid for buildings and didn't pay for as much interest. Well, the only way to do that is to save up and then either pay as you go, or pay a higher percentage of cash for your buildings as you go. But we're not saving, we're not doing that anymore. You know, to me, that's not sustainable. We need, not a newer jail, we need a bigger jail. I'm, you know, the public, if you look at the candidates who ran for DA and the candidates who ran for sheriff, not a single one of them ran under the platform of, we're going to let people out on the street. We're going to, we're going to, people are going to commit crimes, and they won't pay the price. So we elect DAs that say that they're going to prosecute people fairly and ask that they be put in jail if they're guilty. We elect the sheriff, and we have city police chiefs in Mooresville and Statesville, who their job is to go catch the bad guys and put them in jail. Yet, by every account, our jail isn't big enough. Well, it makes no, we shouldn't seek to have DAs that want to prosecute people and police that want to arrest folks if we're not going to give them any place to keep the bad guys. We're not putting money away for a jail. We're going to spend money to plan for a jail, and that's the right thing to do. But at some point, we've got to build a jail, and our current budget and our current tax rate isn't going to make that happen. There's no way, and I'm glad that you mentioned it, but there's no way, there's no way for us to have a sustainable budget when the state of North Carolina continues to transfer financial obligations off of their books and onto our books. I don't think that this board can pretend that with the current revenue stream that we have, which is our tax rate, that we can absorb them walking away from just, for instance, the state is no longer going to pay for textbooks. Now, according to our two school systems this year, they estimate that that cost would be about $1.2 million. And a lot of people say, well, why do you have to buy new textbooks every year? Well, I mean, you've got kids, and some textbooks wear out. But every time the curriculum changes, and believe me, the curriculum changes, if they mandate that another textbook be used, the school systems are required to buy the textbook. They can't elect just to teach things that they want to teach if the state says you will use this textbook for math, or this textbook follows what the end-of-grade tests are going to be. That came out to $1.2 million. That's about 3/4 of a cent on our tax rate. The, you mentioned the $427,000 that we've got to put into the state, to the employees' retirement fund. I mean, that's not going to change. That's not, you know, these two items aren't things that, gee whiz, this is just when times are bad. When the state passes the bill to the county, they will never take it back. They will never take it back. We're not adding to the fund balance. We're taking away from the fund balance. That's not sustainable. Our plan was to do it for three years, and we'll do it for three years, but after that, we're done. We're done. And I just don't see anything that says that, even though they talk about green shoots, I just don't see where there's going to be this great windfall of better economic times that are going to get us there. We've frozen our county employees' pay for two years. Last year, we made them take unpaid furlough days. We have 29 unfilled positions. And I will tell you that, you know, the citizens of this county, you know, at my, heck, two years ago, I lost my job. You know, I was laid off. A lot of companies have, their employees have had frozen budgets or reduced wages, and the county employees shared in that misery. But I don't think that it's sustainable, long-term, that we can balance the budget of the county on the backs of just our employees. I'm not saying that we need to give them big raises, but at some point, at some point, you know, we can't expect them to get us out of the mess. And another thing I would like to mention, most of the spending that we do in this county is not discretionary. The library is optional. We don't have to have libraries. We don't have to have a rec department, and we don't have to have a really good sheriff's department. But other than that, we're required to have EMS. We're required to have, to fund the courts. We're required to have a planning department, inspections. We're required to have DSS. We're required to have the health department. We're not allowed to just say, we're not going to do those things. So when people who don't know about our budget process, and they don't understand the requirements of the county, say, well, we'll go in and we'll cut the fat, they need to look and see that the tax rate in this county is about 50% lower than the surrounding counties. You don't have a fat budget when your food intake is 50% less than your neighbor's. We don't have a lot of discretionary stuff to cut out. Now, on the good news, and this is good news, and I'm going to, and I think that this needs to be said, is it's my understanding that the department heads, on most of our budgets that were this year, underspent their budgets. Okay, that doesn't mean that we gave them too much and they didn't need it. They took our guidance, that we needed to tighten the belt and be very, very stingy with the spending. They did that. That implies good leadership, and it's good leadership at the top, Mr. Mashburn, my hat off to you, but it's also some good managers, some are probably better than others, but good management throughout the county, that our department heads understand the challenges that we face. So while I have confidence in the people, the fact remains that this financial situation that we're in, unless the economy makes a major change, this budget is not sustainable, and I don't think that people should expect that we're going to keep the same level of services that we've had for many years into the future with a 44.5 cent tax rate, unless some of those discretionary items that I mentioned are cut severely, or in fact, eliminated, which I think most people can't imagine that happening. And I always have to tell an army story, and I'll wrap up, but you know, when General Patton was going across Europe defeating the Germans, but he definitely outran his supply line, and they had to stop the advance, and he sent a very famous message to Eisenhower. He said, "My soldiers can eat the leather in their boots, but my tanks, they got to have gasoline." There's only so much that we can ask our employees to do, and only so much sacrifice we can ask them to make. At some point, it takes money to run the county, and especially if we are mandated to provide some of these services. And I just think the taxpayers need to know that we are in a difficult situation, and what we're doing now, the way we're getting by, it worked last year, it'll probably work this year, but looking forward, I think that there are going to be some very difficult, very painful decisions that we need to make. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else before we move into closed session? Okay, this time?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to just to clarify, clarification. Now, we've got May the 20th, the 25th, and the 27th scheduled as work session dates. We tentatively set those at 5:30, but you know, it's, you set the time. If you want to have it at 5:30, you need to let us know if you want us to have something for you to eat, because I know a lot of you are going to be coming straight from work here to do that, and we'll be, we can do that, or if you want to meet later, we just need to know kind of what to plan.
Is it May 20th, 25th, and 27th?
That's correct.
Okay.
What kind of days are those of the week?
Sir?
You know what days of the week those are?
Those are Tuesdays and Thursdays.
20th is a, okay.
20th is a Thursday. 25th is a Tuesday, and 27th.
On the 20th, I'm due to fly back in, but I should be able to make that meeting. The only way I would not is if flights are delayed, okay?
Do you want something light, sandwich-wise? Anyone?
No, I think we're...
Yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
What's the question?
Want something light to eat that? Will you give you? Okay.
Because it's all be long.
Yes, sir.
So we're going to meet at 5:30, and we'll just have something light for you to eat to tide you through, so you can...
That's on all three days.
Yes. Okay. If there's no other business, moving to closed session under 143, S318, Section 11A2, and 143, 318, 11A4. That's a motion. On both of that, most please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those oppose.
... We have a man on the top, Ms. Blumstein, and she has to be responsible for this, but she really not be a colleague, and she's not going to come to work on me. Wonderful opportunity to present that at my front desk. Good job.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
...
Good job.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
...